Thank you. The board will now come to order. Mountain Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman, Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Basley. Alderman Evan.
Present.
Alderman Hubbard.
Present.
Alderman Negrasia. Alderman Colder. Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Gray.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Here.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vaquero.
Present.
Alderman Ryan.
Here.
Alderman Kong.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Basel. Alderman Negrasia.
I'm present, trying to get this camera working.
Thank you. Alderman Negrasia. Alderman Colder.
Here.
Thank you. Alderman Martin.
Hello. Here.
Thank you. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed.
Present.
Alderman Boyd.
Present. Present.
Twenty-eight present.
For being present, we are so very blessed today to be led in prayer by John Watson Senior. If that name sounds familiar, it should because he is the father of John Watson Junior. John Watson Senior served in the Army in the Korean War and he was stationed in France. He raised eleven children and has been a pastor for fifty years. He retired from the Board of Education after thirty years. He's married to Abby Watson and together they are enjoying their retirement. And eighty-five grand. And there are eighty-five grand and great children. So that is a blessing. John Watson Senior, we are so very blessed and thankful to have you here today. So we're turning the floor over to you to lead us in prayer. John Watson Senior, sorry about that.
Thank you, President Reed. And greetings to all of the aldermen and women's. You great soldiers of the Lord that are leading this community in making things as possible to help us. And we do appreciate the sacrifice that you all are making. And we pray God bless you upon all of you. We bow his reverence to this divine Savior that we are serving. Father God, we pray at this time that you would look with tenderness and kindness on these great leaders. These are the ones who are sacrificing to make our community, our city, and all of these things that we must have in place in order to be organized and able to do business. Thank you for your kindness, how you give them to debate and work together, yet love them one another, and giving them the understanding for making progressive plans for our area. I pray, Lord, that you bless all of them together. And I pray especially a blessing on President Reed. He's a great man of God. And I know you take notice of the service that he rendering unto his people. And so, Lord, I pray you bless our whole area with the complications and the difficult time we're living in. Whereas we need our strength and our grace to enable us to make decisions that are beneficiary for all of these around us. We say again in the name of that one for Christ, thank God or Jesus Christ, we say amen, amen, amen. Thank you again. God bless you.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Watson, for such a great prayer. Let's give him a big round of applause and thank you for all of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we're also giving you a special thanks for your name sake, John Watson Junior, who's been just a steadfast supporter of the entire board and helping lead us in prayer and get us on the right foot before we enter into some, before we have entered into some of the most contentious debates over the years.
So. Yeah, definitely.
To you and your family. And please send our special thanks and prayers to your wife, who is just awesome. And I don't know if you all remember when she sang for us, but she is just.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Whose side you leaning on?
Yeah, whose side are you leaning on? Yeah, that's it. All right, thanks Pastor.
Alrighty. God bless you.
God bless you too. We will dispense with line item three introduction of our guest, any introduction lines, all the women from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As. As some of you may notice, the women of, at the board this morning are wearing t-shirts that say empowered women, empower St. Louis. I'd like to have as my honored guest, the President of Rung for Women, Leslie Gill. They are launched, they've launched their inaugural cohort of women. So you can sign up for their services to elevate the lives and careers of women starting this month. And the first class will be November, I'm sorry, this coming March. So in honor of that happening for women in St. Louis, the women at the board here today are, are wearing the wrong shirts. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Gill. And Alderman Negrasia, I understand you wanted her to be a panelist this morning. If you, you should give her a courtesy resolution next week. That way she can be a panelist and have an opportunity to speak at the, at next week's board meeting. Further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yeah, as always, I'd like to have my friend Greg as my special guest.
Welcome Greg. Welcome Greg. Alderman from twenty-third.
I also would like to have my friend Don Nelson, who's here with me. He's here on. My friend Don Nelson, who's home with me, right, pretty much coming to an end. He's a World War II vet. Please keep me in your prayers.
And I don't know if you all caught, caught that, but Alderman Vaquero is at home right now with his friend Don, who is, who's transitioning at this moment. And they're very close friends, so Alderman Vaquero is going to join the board for as long as he can this morning. But he may have to break away because his friend is transitioning this morning. We will keep Don and his family and friends in our prayers. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, Friday, November sixth, twenty-twenty.
Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes dated November the sixth, twenty-twenty.
Move by all, three seconds, second by all, from tenth to all, from thirteenth, in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off our informal counts? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to take board bill, that's one nineteen. Yeah, board bill one nineteen, I would like to place it on the perfection calendar, please.
All right, Alderman from twenty-second, would you, this board bill, I understand isn't going to be very contentious. Would you like to just make the motion under the perfection informal count, make the motion for perfection on it now? If anyone has all the documents that they need, because it was, it was missing an attachment last week.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Is that in an emotion or is that just?
Yeah, you would just make a motion to perfect board bill one nineteen at this point.
Mr. President, I move to move the board bill one nineteen to the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
Board bill, Mountain Clerk, please place board bill one nineteen on the perfection consent count.
So noted.
All the women from the first.
I was going to, I didn't get a chance to see the attachment and I was going to ask for the entire perfection consent calendar to be removed to the, the regular perfection calendar. And also, I want, if appropriate now, before we get into it, board bill, the board bill one, one thirty-five removed from the third reading consent calendar.
All right, so, Mountain Clerk, please make note of that. Take board bill one thirty-five off the third reading calendar, place it on the third, off the third reading consent calendar, place it on the regular third reading calendar. That's one thirty-five. And then, so, one thirty-five.
The, the particular board bills for our numbers for the perfectioning consent calendar are.
We, I think, you're okay if you just, if you request an entire calendar move, we'll just move that.
It's only, well, it was only two until he added that third one. It's one fifty-two, one fifty, and whatever he just added.
Mountain Clerk, please make note of that. Place board bill nineteen. One fifty-two and one fifty on the regular perfection count.
So noted.
All right. Would anyone like to take any further, Alderman from the twenty-first? Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move board bill ninety-eight off the informal count.
Mountain Clerk, please make note of that. Place board bill ninety-eight at the end of the regular perfection count.
So noted.
Any further bills, any further bills? Dispense with line items eight through ten, first, eight through ten, first reading board bills.
Board bill one fifty-eight sponsored by Alderman Howard, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Kong, an ordinance pertaining to special use districts establishing the Bevo Mill Area Special Use District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said Bevo SUD, further providing use and conditional regulations for said Bevo SUD and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board bill one fifty-nine sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance dissolving special allocation funds for forty-four ninety-four Lindell redevelopment area and terminating the designation of a certain portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri relating to such as redevelopment area repealing ordinance number seven zero one five seven and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board bill one sixty sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance pertaining to the Oscar Waring House located at twelve eleven Tower Grove Avenue having as subject matter the designation of the property as a City of St. Louis landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board bill one sixty-one sponsored by Alderman Negrasia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the twenty-foot wide east-west alley in City Block six four seven two, beginning at Twentieth Street and extending to its terminus and bounded by Olive on North, Twentieth on the East, and Pine on the South in City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board bill one sixty-two sponsored by Alderman Navarro, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Rice, Alderman Negrasia, and Alderman Murphy. An ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations amending ordinance seven zero seven nine four, which adopted the twenty eighteen International Building Code as amended and codifying said changes in Chapter twenty-five of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis and containing the severability clause, savings clause, and an effective date. Board bill one sixty-three sponsored by Alderman Navarro, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Rice, Alderman Negrasia, and Alderman Murphy. An ordinance pertaining to electric, electric vehicle charging stations amending ordinance seven zero seven nine five, which adopted the twenty eighteen International Residential Code as amended and codifying said changes in Chapter twenty-five of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis and containing the severability clause, savings clause, and an effective date. Board bill one sixty-four sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans exhibit, listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress except as noted under, under the proposed time scheduled for completion of projects therein. Board bill one sixty-five sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance repealing ordinance number six six four two zero, ordinance number six four nine two eight, ordinance number six five seven two four, ordinance number six five nine one zero, and ordinance number six five four four three deserving, deserving the special allocation funds for Merlin Plaza North, the Convention Headquarters Hotel, eleven four, eleven forty-one through one one five south, I'm sorry, one one five one, South Seventh Street, thirteen twelve Washington, and MLK Plaza area redevelopment projects and terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as redevelopment areas and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD Committee, board bill one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, one sixty, one sixty-four, and one sixty-five. To the Streets Committee, board bill one sixty-one, and to Public Safety, board bill one sixty-two and one sixty-three. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of legislation committee with a due pass recommendation. Board bill one forty-eight as amended sponsored by Alderman Colder and ordinance for the adoption of the twenty twenty edition of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis annotated with charter tables and cross references for former codes included and providing for the retention, distribution, supplementation of the Revised Code with an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading.
Dispense with line item fourteen and line item fifteen, board bills for perfection.
Board bill nineteen sponsored by Alderman Boyd, President Reed, and the following all the persons.
Uh, one nineteen.
I'm sorry, board bill one nineteen sponsored by Alderman Boyd, President Reed, and the following all the persons. Davis, Vaquero, Hubbard, Negrasia, Murphy, Colder, Odenberg, Middlebrook, and Clark Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement wherein the Board of Alderman authorizes the receipt of an appropriate funds awarded under the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development Dislocated Workers National Emergency WIOA Grant relating to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of board bill one nineteen.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of board bill one nineteen.
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-second, second by the Alderman from the thirteenth. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Board bill one nineteen anticipates the receipt of two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars from the Missouri Department of Higher Education to support the workforce development for dislocated workers with the National Emergency WIO grant. And this money is coming through the Slate Office. And it's pretty simple, board bill. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Uh, all the women from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, if Alderman from the twenty-second would yield.
Alderman from twenty-second, we yielded, Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Alderman from the first.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just looked over Exhibit A. So I think you answered my question. So the total grant is two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it, it's coming through, so Slate will be the persons, I mean, the entity that will be in charge of this grant?
That's correct.
Okay, and. I have a question. So in Exhibit A of the budget, uh, will all of this money except for the twenty-two thousand appropriately dollars that they have for administration be given directly to the people who are going to be receiving these grants? I think it was like twenty, twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three that was for administration indirect. But is the rest of the, the grant going to go directly to the people?
Yes, that's mine. Looking at Exhibit A of six, it kind of spelled, it breaks it out for you. It shows the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three that is for admin indirect. And the rest of it has to do with personnel, fringe benefits, travel, equipment supplies, and contractual obligations to administer the grant.
The, I'm sorry, I thought, so that besides the twenty-two thousand dollars, the other amount is to administer the grant, not award to people?
Uh, it's the, minute, the money goes to, read it, it says, the budget goes to ninety-six thousand six hundred and forty dollars in wages for seven, uh, for seven total of, follow the row, six months average each healthcare workers. It's to support healthcare workers, um.
Right.
Cleaners, so there are positions that it's supporting.
Okay, I must be missing something because I don't see the ninety-six thousand. Could you refer me to that? I thought that, I was getting ready to really commend them because I'm looking at twenty-two thousand for admin and the rest I thought was going directly to the program sub recipients or the recipients. So where am I missing the ninety-six thousand?
So if you look at Exhibit A, page six, right-hand column, you see two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and it breaks it out where the sub, starts off subcontractor EDSI budget is as follows. Starts off with ninety-six thousand six hundred and forty dollars for wages. And then it breaks out from there and benefits and planning activities.
Okay.
Different other, um, different other staff positions.
Okay, so I misunderstood what this was. I thought this was going directly to people. This is the, to help the administration of other programs that would help people directly. So there's nothing to apply to here is what I'm trying to get at.
You mean as far as like public applying as a sub recipient?
Correct.
No.
Correct. All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Alderman of the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask that my name be added to this, to board bill one nineteen.
Um, Mountain Clerk, please make note of that, add the Alderman from the ninth to board bill one nineteen. All the women from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say I fully support this. This has been a great bipartisan effort in Jeff City for a long time. And I'm glad that we also can benefit from this and our residents can benefit from this. I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Clerk, please make note of that, add the Alderman from the eleventh as co-sponsor. All the women from the fourth. All the women from the fourth. All the women from the fourth.
I'm sorry. I would also, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to have my name added to the board deal.
All right, Mountain Clerk, please make note of that, all the one from the fourth, please add her name to board bill one nineteen. All the women from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, please add my name as well as a co-sponsor.
And, and clerk, please make note of that, all along from the twenty-eighth. Uh, all the women from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for everyone who worked on this bill. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
And clerk, please make note of that, all along from the eighth should be added to one nineteen. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to have my name out as a co-sponsor to the bill.
And clerk, please make note of that, Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All the women from the thirteenth.
Uh, yes, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Would it be appropriate at this time to see if we would make a move to have it in bank?
Uh, you, you're free to make the motion and let's see if there's any objections to it. But of course, the aldermen that are absent today would not be added to it.
I move we make board bill one nineteen in bank.
Again.
Move by all from the thirteenth, second by the Alderman from the ninth. Any objections? All the one from the first, any objections? It's been moved and seconded that we make a board bill one nineteen in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Mountain Clerk, please make note of that. Every alderman that is in attendance today, please add their name to board bill one nineteen. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by the Alderman from the thirteenth that we perfect board bill one nineteen, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries.
Board bill one fifty-two sponsored by Alderman Negrasia and Alderman Rice. An ordinance to amian ordinance seven six, I'm sorry, seven zero six two four approved October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen to add a section to include an enforcement mechanism.
All the women from the six, you recognize on the perfection of board bill one fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to perfect board bill one fifty-two.
Second.
Move by all on from the six, second by all along from the eighth. Please proceed, Alderman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. If appropriate, I'd like to introduce Amendment One to board bill one fifty-two. It should be in your perfection folders.
Does everybody have access to Amendment Number One? All the one from the first. You have your hand up. Does everyone, all along from the first, you have your hand up. Uh, does everyone have access to Amendment Number One? All the one from the six, please read Amendment Number One to record.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on page two, line twelve, we are going to strike out the words November and there was a blank date and insert December eleventh. Um, having this, if we pass this board bill out, we don't have time, I think, for an agreement to be negotiated by the end of November. And so I'm just doing that one small change to make sure that the bill comes out clean.
All right, you'd like to make the motion for it now?
Yes, thank you. I move that we adopt Amendment Number One to board bill one fifty-two.
Second.
All on from the six, second by all from the eighth. Any discussion on Amendment Number One? All along from the first.
Did she say she's changing it to December?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions regarding that amendment.
Okay. It's been moved by all on from the six, second by all on from the eighth that we adopt Amendment Number One to board bill one fifty-two. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All the one from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board bill one fifty-two as amended, um, provides an enforcement mechanism for an ordinance that we passed unanimously in twenty seventeen that was moved forward. that was moved forward by the clerk, former alderman Terry Kennedy. The issue of illegal lockouts or self-help evictions when a tenant comes home and just finds their items out on the street or their locks changed or both, instead of the process that needs to go through via our court system, was already an issue pre-pandemic and is being exacerbated because of the moratoria that both the CDC has across the entire country and the one that the Twenty-Second Judicial Circuit Court has. Unfortunately, our police department doesn't currently have the capacity to be able to undertake the enforcement of this ordinance. And the Sheriff's Department is uniquely positioned to be able to handle especially eviction notifications because they are the city agency that is already serving those summonses. And many times they're getting those calls anyway. And so this would just allow an agreement under state statute between the City of St. Louis's Public Safety Department and the Sheriff's Department to allow to enforce this one municipal ordinance that we have on the books to hopefully prevent any more or more of these illegal lockouts from occurring. And I'm happy to take questions if my colleagues have them.
All the ones from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. If the Alderwoman from the sixth with yield.
All the ones from the sixth, we yield a question from all the ones from the first.
I will.
All the ones from the first.
So I like to do disclosure, I am a landlord. Also, when I was in law school, did what's called Rule thirteen, worked for legal services and opposed vigorously illegal evictions. I think that that is awful. Saying all of that, I have struggled with this concept of not allowing landlords to evict people. And I understand the concept behind it, but I have struggled because I'm all for that as long as you also require that people not be able to charge the landlords for water, insurance, all of the other thing, mortgages. Because if you allow tenants to stay in a building and they don't pay the rent, and I'm not talking about rich landlords, I'm talking about small landlords who may rent out the second part of their two-family flat or they have a four-family flat. Then at some point, the budget becomes a problem. And I voted for this when the clerk, who was then an alderman of the eighteenth, did it. But now my question becomes, if we're preventing people from evicting people and they don't have to pay rent, if you look on page two of four of the bill that was passed by the former eighteenth ward alderman, it says on line fifteen, "A person does not commit the offense of illegal eviction by taking action to interrupt or diminish essential services to the premises if such action is taken for legitimate health or safety reasons." Okay, well, but sometimes what happens is when landlords can't pay their bills because the tenants are not paying their bills and you haven't given them any recourse, because I've never understood that, don't pay the rent and don't allow them to stay there. And then don't also say in connection with not being able to evict, that you also have to say that then the big banks cannot then call in mortgages. Because what will happen is if you don't, if they don't have the money, either the water gets turned off or the mortgage. I have several tenants right now where they've moved into my apartments because the landlords couldn't afford the mortgage. And when the mortgage company comes in and takes the whole building, they put everybody out whether they paid the rent or not. So I guess my question is, what are we enforcing when we are not allowing the landlords to take their due right of saying, hey, I can't afford to carry two, three, four people that are not paying the rent and I still have to pay all the bills associated with being a landlord? And exactly what would you envision that the sheriff would be doing in this case if the landlord didn't pay the mortgage and/or if the landlord could not and did not pay the water bill or something like that?
I think I understand the question. So I guess my first reply would be that this is only preventing landlords from locking out tenants if they haven't filed something in court, done something that is required under the law of them anyway.
I understand.
Right.
I understand that.
Okay, so, yeah. Could you repeat?
I understand that. I actually used to do that for legal services. Dan Glaser was who I worked for, who's now the head of legal services. But he used to be a part of housing legal services. So I understand, I did many of them. I prevented a lot of people from being put out. But it also, if you look at what we're doing now, we've changed, this has changed. When we passed this ordinance, landlords had a right to go in, present, I'm not getting paid, and therefore I need to have this person evicted because I'm not getting paid and I need that income to pay my bills. Now we have put a moratorium on landlords being able to evict. So then you have to make choices as a landlord of what you're going to do. If I'm not getting in money and if I got a four-family flat and three or four of the people not paying my rent, then at some point I'm having to pay the mortgage, the insurance, taxes are coming up, water. But one of the things it says about it is an illegal offense of illegal eviction is if you cause essential services such as water to be turned off. If you don't have any income coming in, you're going to cause that water to be turned off. Or even more importantly, you're going to not be able to pay your mortgage and the mortgage company will come in and take the building. So that becomes an illegal eviction if you're not paying your water bill. When in fact, how can we enforce not paying your water bill if you're not getting rent? Is what I'm saying, okay? Because if you look and look at it.
Now, there's also a moratorium on water being shut off in the City of St. Louis.
And I'm just using water. I'm using water, but what about mortgage?
I, that's a great question. It's come up several times in a number of other ways as we've discussed the pandemic. And I think it's incumbent upon us to be advocating as we can for the conversations that are happening in Jefferson City at the state level and at the federal government right now in terms of relief because relief has been provided for tenants, but not for landlords. And I do think that is a problem.
And so I'm not advocating necessarily for landlords unless it's right. I think it ought to be companion. If you're saying people do not have to pay their rent because we do not want to make more of a homeless situation, but landlords are not the government. So if the government is preventing you from doing something that you would legally have a right to do, then there has to be a companion going at the same time, not after the landlord gets in deep water because they haven't been able to get their tenants to pay. So then you're going to do what? You're going to have the sheriff then come and seek the landlord and do what to them?
There is a enforcement provision that's the, one that's pretty standard in all of our ordinances that is a fine or dail time. But basically what would happen is a citation would be written.
A citation would be written, and then they would have to go to court and defend that citation, right?
If they wanted to, yes, be, if they were in opposition to it, yes.
And so, and we're not having court, so I'm just, I'm just, so we're not having court right now. So if they still didn't do.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of court hearings happening remotely via webinar.
By Zoom, not Zoom, but, right. So, so, but if, okay, so if we're going to court in the meantime, and I know what you're really getting at, you're getting at landlords come home, they change the lock. They don't just change the lock, they take the doors off of the apartment, they take windows out. They take, I can describe all the things that I've had to, that I used to have to defend against. They remove washing machine and dryers and/or refrigerators or whatever it is. They put a barking dog down below so that you can't get sleep. So there's a lot of ways that they either actually evict them or constructively evict them. So I get that, okay? And I think that's what you're mainly trying to get at. But I'm saying I believe in here, in this bill, especially as it is written in that we will get unintended consequences toward landlords who are right now locked into being the government. When you tell me I cannot collect my rent and I cannot evict people, then you're making me part of a government. And so people say, oh, landlords are so mean, they put people out. I am totally against those kind of people who are illegally evicting people or doing things illegally. But I am also totally against us taking the position that people don't have to pay their rent and that the landlord has no recourse for it. Or you have to wait eight months, ten months, eleven months, twelve months. And then when you come after your rent, that person can't pay it. So you basically have prevented them from getting paid. And so I think we ought to have a program that essentially goes along with this. If I prevent you from paying your rent, then the government is responsible for paying that rent. And I, no landlord would be wanting to put most people out except for troublemakers if that is happening. But if you're preventing them from doing that, and then you're going to write them up a citation if they don't go along with this, I think if you read it, there are some things that they could unintentionally do. And you're saying water right now, but that water bill is still piling up and that landlord would still be responsible for it. And at some point, somebody has to pay it, it will be that landlord. But if you've been able to, because I can pretty fast get people out of my apartments if they're acting up. And I have had to evict people. And you don't want it to be a long drawn out thing for whatever. But if you let them stay six, seven, eight, nine months, you never get the thousands of dollars usually that are owed you because they don't have it. So when that's forced upon you for whatever reason, that is unfair. And I've talked to, I know a number of people on small pieces of property and they actually use that other part of the rent. The rent, they live in one, and the rent is used to pay their mortgage or whatever. So if you're going to go after landlords for their part of it and you've been an advocate about tenants not being evicted, then you also should be advocating that the government at the same time make sure that the landlords get paid their money so that ultimately you're not forcing them to go into a debt that they didn't willingly create. The original landlord-tenant relationship is created. I actually, when I was the Chair of Public Safety, I'm the person who sponsored the bill that you could no longer just set the stuff out on the streets. I thought that was disrespectful of landlords because you're the original agreement with that person. So you should be responsible if you put them out, not to make the whole community have to put up with people's stuff out on the street and also not being able to do that. So a lot of people start renting the storage units and putting it in there. But I think that if you sit down and you look at your long-term effect, there's going to be unintended consequences against landlords who have been forced into a position that is not their own making. And so I'm not opposed to illegal collection, illegal eviction, but I am opposed to not making sure a small business people, Main Street, not Wall Street. I'm not talking about people who got billion dollars, million dollars and own big apartments, but have small apartments and rely on that to pay their rent. For them getting in trouble if they cannot pay the bills. And then later on, they're in trouble, maybe not right now, but they're in trouble because we have stopped them for, from evicting somebody who was not paying rent. I will also say that I have heard from landlords who say that people had this problem way before COVID-nineteen came on. And so now when we're telling them that they cannot evict people, these are people who are already in trouble and they're just building up a debt that they cannot stand. And as you understand it, do we have anything going on right now that would prevent a mortgage company from coming in and taking over a building if the landlord has not been able to pay his mortgage because he has not been able to collect rent from his tenants?
That's a great question there. The only federal protection in place right now is loans that are directly through or supported in any way by Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac. And landlords are also able to receive relief if they work with their tenants in order to have the payment go towards the mortgage instead of the rent payment. But to your point, and I completely agree, I sit on a couple of weekly calls about housing issues. I've worked with a number of stakeholders. I'm regularly communicating with our federal elected officials and state representatives and senators about my concern on this and many other issues.
So what I'm going to say, I'm going to support this, but I think that we need to change the original, the ordinance as written right now that we're including, we're going to enforce, that we need to do some tweaking to the original ordinance, seven oh six two four. If we're going to enforce that, especially during the time of COVID. I don't even care if we have a sunset clause in it that says during COVID, COVID-nineteen, something happens. I think we need to tweak that. Again, I am an advocate of people being fairly evicted if they have to do that or not being unfairly evicted. Self-help is never a good idea, be it evictions or any kind of thing. Self-help is not a good idea, so I support the concept behind it. But to me, there are some problems with it, and I have to have had practice in this. But I support the original concept. And that's why I asked it to be taken off of the consent calendar because I wanted to just have a conversation about it. Thank you, Mr. President, I have no further questions. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say I always appreciate questions. I have not been able to find the exhibit to this.
Six, all the ones from the sixth, all the ones from the first, had the floor. She didn't have any further questions of you, but you'll be able, I'll recognize you a little bit later.
Well, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut her off because I had asked her to speak. So I wasn't trying to cut her off. So if you would indulge, I'll withdraw that because I thought that she was done. So I wasn't trying to cut her off.
All the ones from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was actually just going to mention that I would be happy to work with the Alderwoman from the first on the issue. I happened to notice while we were having our conversation that the exhibit to the board bill is not anywhere I can find it. And so I'd like to place Board Bill one fifty-two as amended on the informal calendar.
Ma'am clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill one fifty-two as amended on.
So noted. Board Bill one fifty, sponsored by Alderwoman Grass and ordinance amending ordinance seven zero nine three two, which defines recreational fire and establishes requirements for their location by changing the minimum distance a recreational fire must be located away from a structure from twenty-five feet to twelve feet.
All the ones from the twelfth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one fifty.
Good morning and thank you, President Reed. I move to perfect Board Bill one fifty.
All the ones from the twelfth, second about all the ones from the thirteenth, all the ones from the twelfth, please proceed.
Well, it's pretty clear from the board bill. I would just, I would appreciate your support and making it possible for all of us to enjoy our small fires in our small backyards.
All right, thanks. All the ones from the first.
My committee member is doing a very good job, so I'm going to be very gentle. Alderwoman, Mr. President, members of the board, it's Alderman from the.
Twelfth.
Twelfth, with yield.
I will.
All the ones from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. So Alderwoman, this is being changed from twenty-five to twelve because of, we all have those little devices in our backyard now, the fire, what are they called, the, not barrels, but whatever the little things are where we can build fires. Is that why that's being changed? Pit, that's the name, right? Is that why this is being changed?
Yes.
And, and so the fire department didn't have any problems with that, right?
I'm not going to say that they didn't have any problems with it, but they're okay with it.
Okay. Oh, very precise, I like that. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I was very gentle with you, you did a good job, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All the, all the men from.
I have no further questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Alderwoman from the twentieth, or the Alderwoman from the first, sorry, that was a slip. Actually, I had the same question I did, but I just wanted to say congratulations to the Alderwoman from the twelfth. I believe this is her first bill coming forward, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? All the ones from the twelfth, you've recognized the close.
Now I'm lost. I got all that praise and I don't know what to do.
That's all right, you renew your motion.
I renew my motion to pass Board Bill one fifty.
All right, it's been, it's been moved by all the ones from the twelfth, second about all the ones from the thirteenth, and also the all the ones from the fourth that we prefer Board Bill one fifty. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's renew our position of giving a.
Thank you.
That was her first bill, we used to always clap for that.
And all along from the first, the other thing we used to do is make sure that we all voted against your first bill.
You know me, Bill, yeah.
Bring it back and
Don't do that to him.
Just so that no one gets out of this board without having a bill that failed at a time.
Thank you for hearing me.
So, um,
It's a little hard to do on COVID and get this, figure it out.
Yeah, it is. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Board Bill 98 sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed and ordinance establishing the O'Fallon Pinrose Special Business District pursuant to sections 7 1.790 through 7 1.808 of the revised statutes of Missouri setting its boundaries, tax rate initial rate of levy subject to the approval of the qualified voters, bonding authority and uses with uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a board of commissioners and containing severability, effectiveness and emergency clauses.
All right, um, Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill 98.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move for the perfection of Board Bill 98.
Move by the
Second.
First, second, about all along from the first, um, the first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill 98 would establish a special taxing district uh, in the 21st ward that would allow uh, our community and our numerous uh, several neighborhoods to redevelop and create community beautification. Uh, while also playing a smart, uh, a, a large role in community organizing. Uh, with that, Mr. President, I have no further uh, comments or remarks. I think this is a simplified board bill. Uh, I will entertain questions from the board if any member has any. But with that, uh, I am done, Mr. President.
Uh, any further discussion on Board Bill 98, further discussion on Board Bill 98? Alderman from the 21st, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by all along from the 21st, second about all along from the first, that we prefer Board Bill 98. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries.
That is the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 85, 106, 107, 118, 129, 138, 139, 140, 141, 144, and 145.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent count.
I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Move by all along from the 10th, entertain second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
All along from 13th and all along from 14th. Uh, any further discussion? All along from the first.
I'm sorry, I don't have any question. I was, I was looking for 143, but it's on the regular third reading, I guess. Okay.
Yes, 143 is on the regular third reading.
All right, thank you.
The move in second that we adopt our third, third reading consent count. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans. I'm sorry, Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. 27 aye votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion, all along from the 10th and third red and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossment.
Board Bill 143 sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard. An ordinance to, to submit a 2021 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant and Housing and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPA Entitlement Programs, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of 2021 CD, BG, home, ESG and HOPA funds.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third reading final passage of Board Bill 143.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading final passage. Or
The move by Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize the close.
Uh, I renew my motion.
It's been moved in the second that we, third reading final passport, Bill 143, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Aye, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on.
27 aye votes.
By your vote, stay in motion along from the 17th and third red and finally pass Board Bill 143.
Board Bill 135 sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of a subordinate taxable tax increment Revenue Note Series 2021 in aggregate principal amount not to exceed 25 million plus cost of issuance for certain reimbursable redevelopment projects costs associated with area-wide projects, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver the seventh supplement trust indenture to connection with the issuance of area-wide series 2021 notes, designating the trustee for such notes, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third reading final passage of Board Bill 135.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I move for passage of Board Bill 135.
Second.
Move by all along from the 17th, saying about Alderman from the 10th, uh, Alderman from the 17th.
I renew my motion.
Uh, any further discussion? All along from the first.
Roll call.
Further discussion, any further discussion? Then move about Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 10th, that we third read and firing passport, Bill 135. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass. Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. 26 aye votes and one no vote.
By your vote, stay in motion, all along from the 17th and third red and finally pass Board Bill 135.
That is the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 85, 106, 107, 118, 129, 135, 138, 139, 140, 141, 143, 144, and 145.
All other business being suspended, the president shall an open session of fix's signature hereto to the end that these may become law. Big stack today. Dispense with line item 20, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution 67 sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, 6901 McCasick Avenue in the City of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
All along from the second, you recognize on first reading of resolution number 67.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have resolution number 67 sent to HUD.
It's been moved by all along from the second that we uh, sign resolution 67 to HUD. Entertain a second. Second about all along from the 19th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution 67 to HUD.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
This line is some unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
The following meetings will be held via webinar. Wednesday, November 18th, HUD will have a meet at 9:00 AM. Rules will have a meet at 10:00 AM. Thursday, November 19th, personnel will have a meet at 10:00 AM. Friday, November 20th, board board meeting 10:00 AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? All along from the 12th.
I'm sorry, I should have done this earlier uh, at the beginning of the meeting, but as a special guest, my brother Bart is here. And he's helping his much older sister some stuff. So I just wanted to thank him and he's listened to all of us today. He doesn't live in the city, but um, he's enjoyed his time here with us this morning.
Welcome, Bart. Welcome, Bart. All along from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Also, maybe could have brought this up sooner as well, but we hit a pretty grim milestone in COVID-19 journey today with 2,000 St. Louisans who have lost their lives over the last several months, and we are nearing capacity in our hospitals. And I just want to tell people to urgently be careful, but also would love a moment of silence to remember those folks that can't continue to be with us.
Right. I'm asking everyone to join us in a moment of silence for all who have lost their lives to COVID and to the many family members and others who are dealing with COVID today and lives are being deeply affected by it. Thank you, all along. All along from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to recognize KMOX and all of the volunteers and support that we're getting for our Habitat Home Build in the Gate District West. Many people know and understand that it's a great opportunity for those who have lower incomes to be able to become first-time homeowners, and the project is moving well. And I just wanted to thank everyone who is supporting Habitat. And if you have any dollars, and I know that's hard to say these days, but please donate to Habitat. They do great work. Thank you.
Right. And all along from the 19th, I also want to just give you a special congratulations on the new Urban League site that was just opened yesterday. Done just a tremendous amount of work in bringing more resources to the community and interconnecting the business community with the community so that more people can get jobs and resources. It's a major resource center. I invite everyone to reach out to understand what to, all the things that will be delivered through that facility. But congratulations. Let's give all along.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman, Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
It is my understanding that all Aldermen are present today, sir.
Excellent. Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn from this Friday the 13th and move to next meeting.
No, you have to. Friday, November 20th.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, we adjourn from Friday the 13th and move to our next meeting, which will be November 20th.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 10th, second by Alderman from the 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
No.
Period. Stand adjourned.